Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Conquer Planning Board on Tuesday, July 25th, 2023 at 7:01 PM. The Planning Board is convening this meeting by video conference using the Zoom application. This meeting will be recorded for future on-demand viewing. I'd like to welcome everyone attending this meeting and take attendance of members and staff. Mark Giddings.
Present.
Abby Flanagan.
Present.
Sue Felshen. I think Sue will be with us, but is not here yet. Andrew Boardman, I think, will not be here this evening, and Rob Almeida is here.
Yes, present.
Thank you. And myself, Linda Miller, am present. Town Planner Elizabeth Hughes. Is here. Okay. I'll briefly review our meeting procedures. Each vote will be conducted by roll call. There will be public participation during certain portions of the meeting. Those participating remotely wishing to make a statement or ask a question during a public participation period should use the Zoom raised hand function or star nine on a phone and wait to be recognized. Once recognized, you may unmute yourself in Zoom or use star six from a phone and then speak. When you speak, please address the chair. Identify yourself by name, address, and any relevant affiliations and speak clearly for the meeting. Comments during public participation are limited to three minutes or less, except for extenuating circumstances such as for those with disabilities and are requested to be respectful. Answers to questions unless very brief and fact-based will be deferred for follow-up at future meetings. The board welcomes written comments at any time instead of or in addition to those made during public participation. Written materials for this meeting are posted on the Planning Board section of the town's website. And I believe I saw that Sue Felshen had joined us. Yes.
Yeah.
So we will now go to the first item on the agenda. That is a recommendation to the zoning board of approval of an application by Howard J. Soberg Jr. for a special permit with site plan review under zoning bylaws sections 4.2.3, 7.2, 7.7.2.12, 11.6, and 11.8 for a combined business residence used in the Floodplain Conservancy District and relief from parking for 33 parking spaces at 166 Commonwealth Avenue, parcel number 2184-2. For the applicant and/or anyone representing them, please identify themselves.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and the board members. I'm Thomas Fowell, who I'm from Coleman's in Newbury. At Damonville Square, we have this council for 166 Commonwealth Avenue Conquerance LLC, whose affiliated anti-arras partners LLC has the property at 166 Commonwealth Avenue under purchase and sale agreement with the present owners and so forth. The applicant intends to redevelop the site by removing the long-existing prior, removing the prior gas station and the current vehicle repair service facility that's long existed on the site. The proposed site and floor plans, elevations, landscaping, lighting plan, and other documents are posted on the on the CBA's website and trust you have had time to look at them as well as the project narrative and attached to the application and memorandum that we filed in support of the application. In summary form, the proposal is to remove the current service station building and underground fuel tanks and associated apparatus and replace it with a new combined residence business building, which is allowed as a right in the West Concord Business Zone. The development team will get into specifics of the proposed reuse of the property. But I find my client's plan would excuse me, include 10 residential units on the upper two floors, five on each floor, and contain commercial uses on the first floor, including a 61-seat restaurant and a subsmaller commercial space. During the time leading up to the actual filing of the application with the zoning board, we had productive meetings with the planning department and also received input from relevant town staff, including engineering, fire, water, and sewer natural resources. There's a pending notice of intent with the with the NRC now. We met last week with the West Concord Advisory Committee and received their input and questions. I would say one thing that we are aware that there are concerns about the location of the proposed parking for this facility in terms of being immediately adjacent to the parking area for 152 Commonwealth Ave., where the bakery is. The applicant, at the request of the planning department, had protracted discussions with the owners of 152 Commonwealth Ave. about the possible shared use of the with the two properties combined, the parking areas, but due to the present uncertainties with respect to potential changes at 152 Commonwealth Ave. site, no agreement could be reached despite despite the discussions and the concerted effort to do so. Well, I'll now introduce, if I can, the development team and the consultants on the Zoom call tonight, I believe Anthony Gagliotti, who was the manager of the LLC and the lead on the project for the for the the team. Believe, but I can't see Tom Sibley and John Garafolo are also members of the LLC and they may be on, I've got the the matrix up here, but I don't see them, but hopefully they're on as well. As far as our consultants, the project engineer and designer of the proposed building is Spurham Engineering LLC, out of Newton. Helen Sevsky is here from Spurham. She's a member of the architectural design team there. And I believe that Gagliamo, maybe Becklor is a lead engineer for the project at Spurham. We also have with us tonight Randy Hart from the BHB, who are traffic engineers for the project, and Jack Rockwood from Ecotec, who's our weapons consultants. So with that, I hope that either John or Anthony can share the plans as appropriate. Elizabeth, she was gracious enough to do at the West Concord Advisory Committee meeting last week and do that also, so. With that, I will turn it over to Anthony to lead us through the the actual design, including the elevations and the floor plans and landscape plan and whatnot.
Oh, well. Elizabeth, are you ready to?
So it's up it's up to Anthony and his team if they want to bring up the plans and run through them if that's easier.
Sure, we can do that.
Great.
I'll share my screen. Let me pull them up first. Hold on, sorry. Okay. Sorry. Zoom is a lot of people are. Okay, so this is the this is the, well, not the like civil site plan, but the like actual kind of, you know, rendered like or like layman's site plan. Where we have our building here, which is all ground for retail lobby. The restaurant, the other small retail space. The 21 parking spaces, the entry. And the area, the riverfront areas, you can see we're trying to improve from what was there. It's right now it's paved and we've discussed this with the NRC and creating paths, we're creating landscaping, we're vastly improving the currently paved area there. The building, it's, we've been in discussions with improving the crosswalks and the pedestrian access with engineering. As far as the, as Tom said, there's 10 residential units. Believe the elevations of the units kind of comply with what the West Concord criteria is for a look and elevation. They've been focusing on other things, but I believe the look of it is what's is aesthetically pleasing to them, maybe not, but we've tried to stay with what is currently there and what other projects look like, so. I don't want to get into like actual civil design and stormwater and things like that, but that's been thoroughly engineered and reviewed and discussed, so I don't know if you have any questions from here. Alan, if you are all the one I had anything, please feel free to do so.
Like, it goes through the the specific first floor plan, the second and third floor plans, a little bit more. Show those.
Sure, we have the the restaurant here that you talked about. The lobby, which comes off the parking lot and enters into the the common area. And then there's another small-scale retail area, which has not been determined as a use, but and this is all as access to the sidewalks and main entry along the sidewalk as well as one along the parking lot. And there's five units on each floor. Varying from one to two to three bedroom.
Anthony, why don't we show the the roof plan as well?
Oh. Yeah, the roof has solar panels, a green roof and a roof deck to comply with trying to be a green building.
Want to go to the landscape plan, Anthony? As you know, there's virtually no landscaping on the side at all. Some adjacent to the Brook of not really green space overgrown.
That's the landscape plan. There's extensive landscaping, a lot along Commonwealth Avenue to shield the parking. Well, along the front and the, as you can see, the riverfront area is vastly improved, the landscaping.
And the path that shows connects up the sidewalk on Commonwealth to the to the Neshoba Bakery site, which is was requested to by in the discussions with the planning boards, I mean with the planning apartments, I recall. So that's a an amenity that we added to enable people to access that site from that area. And as you can see, there's extensive landscaping proposed as opposed to what's there now, which is, as we say, virtually nothing.
Right.
So we might open that up for any questions that you might have with respect to the to the to either the landscape plan or the site plan or the floor plans, if you have any questions we can ask.
Okay, if we are ready for questions from the board. I can't see everybody, but.
Linda, I don't know how to raise, I don't know how to raise my hand, but I had a couple of questions. May I ask them?
Yes, please start.
Somebody will have to teach me how to raise my hand, but the restaurant, how many seats are you planning on?
61.
Six one?
Yes.
And and how much staff will that take at its peak? Any ideas ballpark?
Let me see, I've got that. I think it actually it shows on the on the first, the cover sheet of the plan, Anthony, let me get that out.
Approximately eight employees on the largest shift.
That's right, eight employees on the largest shift. Thank you.
And the apartments are one and two and three-bedroom apartments. What's the approximate square footage of those apartments?
They vary from 800 to 1,500.
And the two bedrooms probably halfway between.
Mostly twos.
Yeah, so for example, this is the the this is the first floor and then mirrored on the next floor, so unit, unit. I just go through this real quick. Unit one is 1,523 square feet, which is a two-bedroom.
Yep.
And two is 854 square feet, which is a one-bedroom.
Yep.
Unit three is a 1,881 square feet, which is a three-bedroom.
Okay.
Unit four is 1,447, which is a one-two bedroom. And then unit five is 1,235, which is also a two-bedroom.
Okay. Thanks.
And units, sure, units four and two have balconies.
Balconies.
Which actually, unit, I'm sorry, unit three does as well. Actually, they all have them, I'm sorry. They all have balconies.
You know, is the square footage on those?
Yes.
It's on the plan, yeah. So if you look at each like unit number, you can see.
No, I'm sorry, I meant on the balconies, how how big are the balconies?
Oh, Alan, I don't know, they included in there the square footage, probably not, but they look like they're about.
No, they are not included in the scarfers. And the size are very
Okay.
From balcony to balcony.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure.
Any additional questions, Mark?
Nope, thank you.
Elizabeth, did you want to?
Sure.
Speak, or should we ask for other board members?
Oh, I just wanted to make one clarification. There is a typo on that, on the first page for the parking that will need, that still needs to be changed. It has eight employees on the largest shift, so that requires eight parking spaces, and the plan says six.
It's that, excuse me, Elizabeth, I thought we filed the revised plan that showed that.
I'm I'm just showing what was presented here.
Sorry, yeah, we did, and I didn't, I'm.
Oh, no, that's okay. That's why I just pointed it out, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
We did fix that on the on the file plans, it doesn't show on this one.
So is is the actual relief that you're looking for for 33 or 31 spaces? It was a little unclear when I tried to add them up.
It was three, it is 33.
33, thank you.
I believe.
Okay, and Sue.
It is 31.
Excuse me?
A 31 parking space relief we are looking for, not 33. All right.
All right, I have several questions about things that I noticed when I was reviewing the application. So first of all, I was looking at the application document itself and under item three, which is proposed project, underground coverage by buildings and pavement. The document says that the existing square footage is 91.16% of the site, and the additional proposed is negative 2,100, never mind the footage, 10.39% of the site, yielding a total of 78.58. But when I subtracted 10.39 from 91.16, I got 80.77, which is a couple percent off, and I'm not sure where that went wrong, but can you please look at those numbers and make sure that whichever numbers have been adjusted in whatever necessary way? Second of all, in the same document, under item four supplemental information, proposed water supply, the supply is specified as town and the adjacent entry reads if town water estimate demand gallons per day has not been filled in, so that should get filled in. Similarly, under our water conservation measures provided, no box has been checked. Under will the project require removal of soils from the site? No box has been checked, although a description of soil removal is included, so I assume you meant to check yes. And under does project require the removal of any trees greater than two feet or major screening vegetation? No item has been checked, so if you can just make these minor adjustments to the document, that will be helpful. In the narrative document, I see you state little or no impact to town utilities, but for schools you say no impact. And I think you probably meant to say little or no impact, you state that according to demographics, projected demographics, it's you're not expecting to get. Actually, that was a little bit unclear, but no matter who the expected Democrat demographics are, there could be some children, even grandparents sometimes raise their grandchildren, so it seems like it should say little to no impact. Under the document for floor plans, elevations, and renderings, Elizabeth previously noted that there is a missing door in the resident lobby on the first floor. It's just a tiny little thing to draw the doorway in. I actually had a question on this, and this is my ignorance for which I apologize. I noted several circles on the plan which show up often near doorways, sometimes in corridors, and I couldn't figure out what they.
It shows accessibility, so 60 inches.
Okay, I wondered about that, but I just wasn't sure. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
On the landscape plan, there is at at the north east. No, sorry, it was the top right, but that's not not northeast. But at the top right of the landscape plan next to the building, there is green space shown, but no it doesn't show what kind of landscaping there will be in that area that's next to the dumpster. But in some of your renderings, for example, in the floor plans document on page eight, which is labeled A007, I see a tree in the rendering, and that would in fact be a great place for a tree, I should think, but it's not clarified on the landscape doc plan what the landscaping is for that area. And finally, not quite finally, I'm sorry. Under lighting and photometric plan, I didn't see any color temperature listed for the W1 fixtures. The P1 fixtures are listed as 5,000 Kelvin, which seems excessively blue for people's night vision and also for the sake of whatever creatures may be outside and and trees in addition and other plants in addition to humans. And particularly on the side of the Neshoba Brook, there seem to be, I can only call it an isolated island of light spillage as high as a quarter-foot candle, and I'm calling it an island because there are areas that are closer to the building that have a lower labeling of foot candles. So I wonder if there could have been some mistake when the software got run. Maybe you can look up into that later and figure out what's going on there. Okay, and now I'm down to the last thing that I had listed when going over the individual plans. In the memorandum in support of application, it says that there will be an EV charging station, but I don't see the location marked on the plan. Thank you. That was a lot of very small things. That does it for questions I can think of at this time.
Are there additional questions from the board? Then I have a few questions. One has to do with circulation of traffic within the site. I realize that historically the gas station had a very different pattern of entrances and exits. And I assume that was successful for many years, and I wondered why you didn't consider that approach with a new plan for the the property.
I can respond to that. So there is a 25-feet-no-disturbance zone on the left side of the site. I can actually share my screen. If that's going to be easier. So this area, and there is this Neshoba Brook and a bridge here. So as a conceptual idea, we wanted to have the building with the relationship with the green area. So we didn't want to have the parking right next to the green area, which we would like to utilize as a green space for all public. So we want to, we wanted to combine with the green area with our building. And I remember in our one meeting with Elizabeth and she said to me that like I need to check the entrances with the engineering department. And as per their suggestion, so we kind of also like this, had to agree with them to like bring the driveway somewhere from here rather than having it from this side. But as the main idea, we wanted to have the building with the relationship with the green area and by the river. So that was the main.
As as a consequence, when you have a a delivery, there really is no way for a truck to turn around in that parking lot. And you would require any delivery to back out onto Commonwealth Avenue.
Yes, we are aware of that, and there is no way to like have a turning radius for the trucks, and that way we will only have this much building, and this project wouldn't be continue with like this much. That's the limitation that we have.
Okay, secondly, in terms of circulation, you've put a bike lane behind parked cars, and I wondered if that was really a suitable location for a bike lane, given that a car backing up might not see someone on a bike.
I mean, it's all our responsibility to check when we like reverse driving. But we can consider that as a comment and maybe like find a better place for the bike lanes. But the idea was to like have them use the parking lot and enter to the parking, bike parking areas through the driveway.
Mm-hmm. And I I noticed that you have two handicap parking spaces. Yet the handicap entrance to the building is not at the nearest location, but it's in the middle of the building. Is it, is that?
Yeah, that's the main entrance.
So that is handicap accessible? So that is, um, handicap accessible?
Yes. Parking spots are here, and this is the main entrance. And this is a handicap accessible. Also, the other entrances are also handicap accessible.
So all the entrances are?
Except this, sorry. Two of the entrances are handicap accessible. Because there's only stairway on this one.
I see. Okay, and, um, so if the restaurant wanted to institate, institute takeout orders, and you wanted to have, um, short-term parking, where would that be located?
Short-term parking, um, probably somewhere here where we have meters. Not in the site, I guess. Anthony, do you agree? Or do you have any other comments on that?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we just don't have room for short-term parking on the site.
So then, okay. Um, i- in terms of, um, uh, other building entries, um, it looked to me as if you put the staff entry to the restaurant behind the dumpster. Is that correct?
Yes, somewhere here. But they can also enter from here and from here as well. This is only, uh, for like use accessing the dumpster easily, so we had that entrance.
So intended to be a public entrance, uh, more of a service entrance, I think.
I see, so that would that, okay.
Helen, why don't you bring up the floor plan? That might be helpful.
Sure.
That's a staff entry.
Yes, staff entry, and, uh, as I said, it's also for accessing the trash area from the storage and kitchen prep area.
But then.
Any entrance can be used by the staff.
But then the, the trash room doesn't really seem to have a way to enter or exit towards the dumpster. Unless you go through the cleaning and storage space from the trash room, it just doesn't really flow.
It's supposed to be trash room, um, maybe we mixed it up, but this is supposed to be trash room, so it's easy access to the trash area as well, and this is cleaning and storage.
Maybe you would want to relabel those spots.
Sure, yeah.
Okay. So Linda, I think it's, um, so the admin trash, cleaning, and storage, that's for the residential use?
Correct.
So if I, if you're looking at the entry plaza on the far right, and you come into that lobby, there's the two little double doors for the small retail where you could get in that way, but then the rest of that, that is all for the residential use?
Correct.
And you do?
I understand.
Oh, okay, okay. I just didn't know if everybody understood, and then the middle entry is only for the residential use. Then there's the two entries for the restaurant, and then on the far left in the back is an additional entry for the residential use.
I'm sorry, the far entry in the back, where is that?
On the left, um. Yes, so thank you, thank you, Helen. That's the, that's the, the third entrance into the.
Into the residential or?
Yes.
Stores deal with.
Okay, and, and did you mean to have entry from the lobby into the retail?
That can change depending on the function of this retail space, but if it's a gym or yoga or Pilates, maybe it's better to have entry from the lobby as well. But if it's not, that can be closed.
Okay. Um, and let's see, um, in terms of, uh, well, that's any questions I had on circulation. Um, Abby, were your questions on this subject as well?
Yeah, they were. So my question was, in the memorandum of support, you state that the project poses no detrimental impact to convenience or safety of pedestrians or vehicles as a result of the location of the parking area or the single entrance exit from Commonwealth Avenue. And I share the concern about delivery trucks, because you're gonna have, you know, if this is a green building, you're gonna have trash, you're gonna have recycling, you may have compost, you're gonna have a couple deliveries a day for the restaurant, you're gonna have UPS, FedEx, what, Amazon, what have you. Are there any mitigation strategies for those trucks onto what is a busy and somewhat difficult intersection to begin with? Are there any plans in place for pedestrian safety crossing that entrance? Um, given that I think the plan increases pedestrian circulation on the property and certainly increases the use of off-site or request the use of off-site parking spots. So you're gonna have increased pedestrian traffic over that driveway. And I'm wondering if you've considered, um, any type of mitigation for pedestrian safety when it comes to that?
At the entrance, Abby, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, at the entrance where you have that driveway, and you know, the, the typical vehicle traffic is one thing, but if you have this whole host of trucks backing out of this driveway, and you've designed a, a building that very nicely in some areas increases pedestrian use and traffic, you're gonna have more people walking across that driveway, um, to access these, the screen space, to access the other entrances. And my question is, have you considered any sort of mitigation strategies for street safety when you have an inability for these various delivery trucks, of which there could be many a day? Uh, they don't have the ability to turn around, so they're gonna be backing out into traffic. So both trap, vehicle safety and the primarily pedestrian safety?
Well, good evening. This is Randy Hart with BHB, um, transportation engineer on the project. Um, you, you bring up a very good point, and you know, we are aware that the trucks have to back out, um, but there could potentially be some tweaks to the sidewalk in that area that might make it more friendly for the combination of those two to interact together. That's something we can take a look at and respond to.
Thank you.
So is your question on the, uh, the circulation issue?
It is actually. I realized I meant to ask a couple of things earlier or, or have been brought up by other board members' questions. First of all, let me just confirm. So I see that the, um, lobby entrance to the building provides excellent handicapped access from the handicapped spaces for the residents. But just to confirm, anybody who's handicapped and is going to the restaurant will park in the parking lot, go back out to, through the driveway to the street? Well, I guess they, they could go either direction, and then they would go down the public sidewalk in order to get to the restaurant entry, because they wouldn't be able to go through the lobby, which is for residents only. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and my second question is, you stated in your plans that trucks would nose in to, for deliveries, and then they would back out. Why not have them back in and nose out? There are still issues with, um, uh, going backwards in any direction and with circulation within the parking lot itself, but they would at least then be able to, um, be where they were backing into, because they would have just been in the street, and they would be able to nose out instead?
Yeah, that, that may work.
Although there is of course a problem that with delivery trucks such as, uh, Amazon or FedEx, you can't make them back in, and let's. Okay, thanks. That was, uh, my only additional circulation at this time.
Hey.
Thank you.
Um, then I think we also wanted to discuss parking relief. Um, and, um, uh, now that we figured out that the number, uh, of relief requesting is thirty-one, um, perhaps you could walk us through, um, where you would see that parking, um, relative to, uh, your parking, your, um, parking results, which showed in both cases that, um, there really wasn't an extra thirty-one uh, spaces available in terms of, um, I think most times of the day, uh, on the Wednesdays and Saturdays that you looked at, so where do you see offset parking availability in a reasonable distance to walk to this property? And, and I am assuming that, um, that, um, ten parking spots dedicated to the restaurant and eleven parking spots dedicated to the restaurant, to the residents. Are the residents going to have assigned parking?
Anthony, I don't know if you want me to jump in on this. It's Randy Hart again. Um, just, uh, what I can offer is a couple of points. Um, one is that if you look at the distribution of available parking on street in proximity, what we did see is that during the periods when the restaurant would be most active or, you know, at evenings, whatever, there was a decent amount of availability in close proximity, so we felt pretty good that that was covered. I, I think where we're a little tight was during the middle of the day. If it's a lunch facility as well, there could be a crunch during that particular period. Um, my understanding of the parking on site is it's for the residents, but I'll, I'll let, leave that to Anthony to verify.
Tom, do you want to jump in on this since you prepared that?
Well, I think, I think we would, we would, I mean, the question is, is, is how many of those spots are going to actually be utilized and during what time of day in terms of, uh, uh, you know, the, the proximity of this facility to the, uh, to the, kind of the rail, the rail station and, and so forth, and we've seen in other locations that, um, now the circumstances where, uh, obviously the parking required for the residential uses nowadays is oftentimes from a zoning standpoint, zoning requirement standpoint, more than, uh, in actual, actual uh, parking that is frequently utilized in terms of, uh, you know, a two-bedroom unit is not necessarily gonna have two cars, um. So we anticipate that the demand for the parking is not gonna be consistent with the zoning bylaw. It's, as we see in a lot of other locations where the actual parking demand, uh, is, is, uh, for the residents is fewer spots than zoning bylaw requires, so we think there are extra spots available there. Um, I mean, as far as the parking's concerned, um, you know, we understand that there's a, that there's, uh, you know, uh, obviously we're looking for relief from that, but you know, as you, oh, I know, um, and this is not an apple-to-apple situation, because it's a longstanding existing facility, but, uh, the ninety-nine restaurant, which is now the, uh, West Concord Tavern, Village Tavern, has no parking, uh, and, uh, and that works apparently, uh, and we, we think, we think that, um, we think that this, this facility, this site will, the parking will be, will be found and will be available. It likely being locked in the parking lot that with spaces that are actually not gonna be utilized, because the number of cars that we anticipate on a, on a practical and actual basis are gonna be fewer than the zoning bylaw requires. And I know I, I mentioned in my memorandum, the availability to ride our playground, and I saw Elizabeth's comments with respect to that. Um, you know, it's, it's, again, it's a town facility. I understand it may be other, the direction of the, uh, control of the recreation department, but, um, I'm not quite sure that, um, that's a difference from a standpoint of it's still a town-owned facility, just like the, you know, Stowe Street and, 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 uh, in Kai's Road and so forth, so, um, you know, I, I think from a practical standpoint, unless it's chained up or locked up, I think there's, there's availability, uh, there. It's a very short walk to the, uh, to the facility from there. So I, I, I view that as a practical alternative, uh, even though there's that jurisdictional question Elizabeth raises about the, the, uh, the recreation department's having control of it.
Okay, I just wanted to continue with, um, planning board questions, and we will have public comment and, uh, questions, um, at the end. Uh, just to let everyone know. Um, in terms of, um, other, are there other questions from the board in terms of the issue of parking? Uh, Sue?
Yes, okay, um, I think this is a question for Elizabeth. The planning board has granted parking relief in, uh, to a variety of prior applications. But my recollection is that for residential, um, developments, we found that the amount in the zoning bylaw really is more than is necessary. Haven't we been granting relief on the lines of one and a half spots per bedroom? Um, and I don't know if you have that information in front of you right now, but that's one question that I have. And, um, uh, well, my recollection regarding the ninety-nine is that it infamously has no parking, and I've certainly seen plenty of signs elsewhere in West Concord saying, no ninety-nine parking here. So I take that to have been a longstanding issue for, um, other businesses around town. This is another question for Elizabeth. I wonder if you can say a little bit more about ride-out. It is, is it that, um, the parking fair is dedicated to the playground and no one else is supposed to be parking there? Although it is in fact not gated off? Or what is the status of parking in that area? And then this, I think, is a question for the applicants, unless, uh, if all the restaurant be required to not serve lunch, and otherwise, how would the, how would, um, peak parking at lunchtime work? Thank you.
Um, so I'll try and remember and go in order. Um, uh, Brookside Square and also, um, thirteen B Commonwealth Ave were both granted as combined business residence special permits, um, relief to go down to one point five parking spaces. Um, and then for the ninety-nine, that's been a longstanding, um, legally non-conforming use as it relates to parking. Um, there's also no residential associated with, um, that site. Um, Ride-Out Playground is, um, managed by the Recreation Department, and, um, they manage those fields and the use of those fields, um, day and night, and, um, so they program the use of those fields and, um, and then people can go there, park, and use Ride-Out Playground. Um, I'm not aware of any, um, parking relief that has been granted for, uh, you know, commercial development or a mixed-use development that relied on, um, a recreational facilities parking, um, you know, in Concord Center. It's been the Kai's Road Parking Lot or, um, such, the library was granted relief. Um, the Stowe Street Parking Lot, which is just a municipal parking lot. Um, the one behind Vanderhoofs is a municipal parking lot. Uh, in West Concord, there is only the little small parking lot next to, um, is it, um, Twin Seafoods on the opposite side of that building? Um, and that's all that I'm aware of. And I think that was all three of your questions. Was there one more?
Uh, well, there wasn't, but you said that, um, there's the public parking by Twin Seafood. There's also the three-hour spaces at the train station that are town-owned. There's, it's not a large enough, but.
So the only, yeah, so the only other space is, um, yes, in the commuter rail lot, there's the three-hour spaces. Um, and then there's the spaces associated with, uh, when the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail was built, those additional, I think it's, um, I don't know how many parking spaces were built right there. Um, that's all that I'm. I don't know how many parking spaces were built right there. That's all that I'm aware of.
Right. I forgot about that. There are some spaces there. Okay. I, yes, while we're on parking now, I feel I perhaps should have said more about circulation, but on the other hand, I thought engineering's comments covered what I might have said.
I was going to move on to the issue of affordable housing. Will any of the units be affordable?
You have to refresh my recollection. I believe Elizabeth.
One will be affordable.
Yeah, I think it's one is the requirement based upon the number of units.
Is it not twenty percent, Elizabeth?
It is twenty percent. So two units would be required to be affordable.
There was an article that came up, was going to, on the warrant for this Springs Town meeting to change it to ten percent for small projects. But the article was not moved this year in the end. It was postponed till the future.
Are there any, I'm trying to see if there are any questions from the board. Okay, I'm going right along in terms of.
Linda, I just want to also point out that the outside consultant that the Board of Appeals has hired to review the vehicle and pedestrian circulation and the relief from parking. I hope to have that report finished and to be reviewed by engineering and the applicant. Hopefully within the next two, two and a half weeks.
Excellent. Thank you. I had a question also with regard to open space and we have this nice map out, but if I, I wondered what the total number of, for open space is. Given that this is quite a substantial, I think the residential floor area is about eighteen thousand square feet. And that we're supposed to have a substantial multiplier of that. So I wondered how much actual open space you have, including the balconies and the green roof? And how much relief in terms of open space that you were seeking?
I believe there was no zoning requirement for open space for this lot? In terms of zoning call?
Oh, I see. Is that, is that correct, Elizabeth?
No. Under section four, two, two, three.
Four, two, three, three. Open space shall be provided on a lot apart from any paved area equal to twice the gross floor area of the residential portion of the building. That one?
Yes.
Is that for West Concord Business, West Concord Village?
It does not matter.
Okay.
So we will, we will have to check that. Oliver, do you have any number regarding open space?
No, no, at, at this time I don't have any numbers, but for sure we're improving what, what we had before because we had basically all, all pavement. And now we are reducing the paved area.
I had another question, which was the previous use of the site was for a gasoline filling station and an automotive service station and that there have been underground fuel storage tanks, which you're seeking to remove. And I, I wondered at the current time what knowledge you have of any hazardous chemicals or possible remediation might be necessary? Is, is there any data on that that you have in your possession?
We had test pits done and there was no signs of any contaminated soils at the time.
Great. And the other, one of the last questions I have is just that the location of the trash dumpster. It seemed to me that the location is right under some balconies and very visible as well from the street. Is there any other option in terms of where that might be located, both in terms of how pleasant it might be to see, et cetera, for residents and for passersby? And for those in the parking lot?
The balconies are not just above the enclosed trash bins. It's offset from the trash bin. So it's not right about the enclosed trash area.
Well, it appears to be right above it in the sense that someone standing on the balcony who looked down would look straight down on the dumpsters, which I see, by the way, are screened from street level.
So do you suggest removing the balconies from that site over the dumpster?
Well, I think there's a question about the dumpster in terms of accessibility. Trucks having to back up once the dumpster has been emptied and perhaps its location in terms of visibility and even potential to rent the apartments, you know. But it's, it's your project. I think it just seems to me that you might wish to think about that location. So if, if there are other questions from the planning board, otherwise I think we can move on to public comment. And please remember that comments are limited to no more than three minutes and should be addressed to the chair. So I, I think the first hand that I saw up with was Anne Sussman. And if you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, I think this is a very exciting project. It's very important for the cultural district. Laura, thank you for considering it. We are at the West Concord Advisory Committee. We do have several concerns. We want to see more development like this, but we do have concerns. I am a licensed architect and the first thing I noticed is that the drawing, the site plan doesn't show Minuteman Automotive driveway directly across. What the developer is proposing is a five-way intersection at the curve, which is extremely dangerous. I am a strong proponent for evidence-based design. I have never seen in my life a five-way intersection on a curve which will have twenty-one cars in that parking lot that is safe. We must consider this, given that the Mass DOT has reported a thousand eight hundred car crashes in Concord and three deaths in the past five years. One other thing I want to say is that it's really important. A planning board per Mass, the bylaws and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, if you're looking at a residential complex over two units, you must have an architectural review. You may otherwise be violating the law in the Commonwealth. As far as I know, I looked at these drawings with two other architects. Not one of them looked like they've been reviewed by an architect. They are all signed by a civil engineer. That is fine if you have a two-unit complex. Over two units, it is not legal in Massachusetts. So I think I have a lot of other issues. We'll be bringing to your attention this at the, in something we're writing up. This is a very important project. We need housing. We need more retail and stuff, but this, this just doesn't work. I think the issue is you cannot look at parking individually per, on each lot like it's in a vacuum. That's one of the things David Hahn, who runs the design review board in Acton, told me, you can't look at this project in a vacuum. You have to look at the whole town. And, but anyway, we could go on, but I look forward to putting these comments together and I hope that you have an architect review the drawings. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, Anne. Steve, Ursula?
Thank you for the comment. And I would like to emphasize that we have an architect consultant. So we have been working with that architect from the beginning of this project. So we are gonna have him stamp the project if that's the issue. Thank you.
Yeah. Hi, this is Steve Arza, Thirty-Nine Cottage Street in Concord. First, I just, my first thought is that this project is a little too much for the site. It sort of reminds me of the Dino's Building, which was squeezed into that lot and except Dino's has no residential. I just off, I would actually, I would propose to reduce the units to four units of four and maybe eliminate the retail, the extra retail spot there, but that's just my own thought. Have you considered underground parking? Similar to some of the other project, the Brooks, Brookside. I would suggest that there be a condition that the dumpster not be emptied before seven AM in the morning, which tends to happen a lot. And it's very loud when it's at five-thirty in the morning in town here. There's no, I don't see any space for snow removal. And you're gonna have snow in the winter, obviously. And another comment on delivery trucks, what I see at Dino's here is there's no, Dino, the trucks can't pull into the parking lot. It's a similar type parking lot. What they do is they double park on Cottage Street. So what I envision happening here is that delivery trucks will just do as they please. They will double park on Comm Ave in the front there and make their delivery. They won't go into the parking lot. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Pamela Drit?
Hello, Pamela Drit, thirteen Concord Green. I have three questions. Is the building going to, are the residences going to be rented or condos? Is the building going to be all electric with heat pump cooling and heating? Is there going to be battery storage with the solar? And what exactly is meant by green roof here? I echo also the suggestion to at least consider underground parking.
Underground, you say?
Yes. So those are questions I'd like to know. Is this going to be rented or sold? Condo-wise?
There are going to be condos there where they will be all heat pumps, electric. And what was your last question? The solar, yeah, I mean, that's not fully designed yet, but it's just.
Are you plant, are, are there, are there plans to have battery storage with the solar? And what did you mean by green roof?
Well, that, I don't, I don't know. We don't have details on the solar panels yet. It's just, this is, you know, conceptual right now. And the green roof panel, do you know what the green roof specifics are?
So as you said, this is like concept, conceptual design and we are like having an idea to like have greens, a green roof with the plantings and maybe we can collect the water from the roof and reuse the water for the irritation of that plantings.
Like a garden, in other words, up there?
Correct.
Okay, cool. And you know, there's also solar that goes over gardens that you can use. And I, I strongly recommend that you integrate battery storage. You will save money and it will be better.
Thank you, Pamela. Elizabeth, did you?
So just to circle back on the need for an architect, I believe that's a building code requirement. It, it is not a requirement for a site plan or special permit approval that the plans be stamped by an architect. And so I just wanted to clarify that. If the applicant is considering battery backup storage, I strongly, strongly recommend you speak to the fire department now. They have significant concerns with battery backup storage being within a building, especially a building of this nature and their ability to be able to fight a fire. And so they are now looking at for larger facilities, making battery backup storage be in a separate building outside so that it can be contained. So I, if that is something you're going to consider, I would suggest you reach out to Assistant Chief Walter Latta about that now. Because I, I don't see where, there isn't an inch of space left to put it. So inside or out. So if that is something you're going to consider, you should speak to them now.
Okay. Are there any other comments from board members or the public? If not, I would guess, Elizabeth, we might want to continue this. Given that we're waiting on, as you pointed out, a number of reports to come back from town staff and consultants. And maybe we can find a date and see if that's, would work. You said two to three weeks, so perhaps our meeting on the twenty-second of August might be appropriate. Mr. Falwell and your group, would that be convenient for you?
Twenty-second of August?
Yes.
Anthony, I think that it doesn't seem, we need to wait for that report. It's fine. I mean, obviously, like to move it forward, but we understand the necessary delay for the town consultant and so forth.
I, I also think the board has outlined some, you know, specific questions and is looking for additional information to be submitted by you as well. So that would be, that would be helpful to get that sooner rather than later.
Agreed. Thank you.
Are we going to have a report with the request of the changes or is it just for our notes?
We will, it's generally not something that we would constitute in a letter to the applicant, but this meeting has been recorded and will be posted. And so if you need to refer to that or to Elizabeth, I'm sure her notes are going to be very detailed and we can clarify any questions you, that you have about our comments.
Okay, thank you.
When would it be posted?
So Heather will probably get the link to the video by tomorrow and can forward that link to you to share with your team.
Thank you.
So do we need a formal motion, Elizabeth, or?
Nope, since this is just, yep, since this is just a recommendation. Um nope, since this is just, yep, since this is just a recommendation, um you know, as Cherry can continue discussion. Um I don't, we don't have anything on the agenda for August twenty second, so seven PM would work.
Very good. Okay, thank you so much for um your presentation and we'll look forward to seeing you in a in a month.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Uh and now we will move on to administrative business. Um first, we will take a public comment. Public comment, if this period is limited to fifteen minutes with no more than three minutes allocated to anyone speaker. Public comment at this point is limited to items that are not on the agenda. So if there is any public comment, could you um use the raised hand function? We'll wait for a minute or so. Um if not, then we'll proceed to the MBTA Community Zoning Update Discussion. Um we've said that we would include this on the agenda for each planning meeting. Um at this particular meeting, I'd just like to make a little um uh comment initially. Uh the planning board has had uh internal discussions regarding potential conflicts of interest related to the MBT MBTA Community Zoning Act. Uh because we all live in Concord and uh if we own property or rent housing here, that town's compliance with the act, uh which we might influence could positively or negatively affect property values or rents. As such, I've chosen to disclose that I uh am an owner of property within one half mile of a commuter rail station. A town council has advised that I may continue to participate in discussions and deliberations regarding this issue. But I did wish to raise that um and say that we had discussed it and that um town council has uh weighed in on the result there. So um any other board members have comments? I think Sue might.
I do. I received the same advice from town council. It also appears that my residents may lie a few feet outside of the half mile district, but I not a hundred percent sure if that boundary is a hundred percent sure. So um so I also have disclosed uh my potential conflict and and have received advice from town council that I may participate in discussions.
Okay, thank you. Um so I believe now we're scheduled just to have a general follow up discussion um regarding the June twenty eighth public information session. Um I don't know if uh Elizabeth, you would like to comment on that first, or I can give a a little update. Or come summary and and get any feedback from um uh board members initially on that. Um my key takeaway um was that it was a very positive meeting. Um we had a great turnout. Um I think that uh that means that there's a great deal of interest in the MBTA um program and that uh we will continue to talk about it um uh actively uh at the planning board. I also felt that there was a positive response to our consultants. I thought they did a very good job and would like to commend them for um being very um helpful uh with regard to the um discussion. I think uh key takeaways that I had were that um it's uh challenging to understand that no buildings need to be built or projects need to be completed under the act. Uh I think that message came across. Um I think the message that um zoning must be developed as an overlay district. And that um essentially you're super imposing options for multifamily housing by right on top of existing zoning was also a a bit of a challenge, but the um cookies and the plate uh description helped somewhat there. And that um I think it also was a challenge to understand that the real built landscape that is it exists in in our town does not necessarily impact the calc calculation for compliance. So I I think those um were some challenging uh areas, um and I thought that the consultants helped us uh give people a a better understanding of that issue and prepare us to move to the next phase, which is to really take a look at the the mapping and the zoning. Elizabeth, if you had any additional comments or if we get uh any feedback in terms of um the June twenty eighth meeting from the board, um and then we can see if there's public comment on that that pro program. Good. Um I guess if anyone has any, oh, yes, Sue.
I have a question about the next upcoming forum and I'm not sure, are you planning to bring that up separately after discussing the prior one?
Um that uh wasn't really on the agenda, but it's a great time to bring it up and you can continue to bring it up. That forum is tomorrow night and um it will be uh virtual. Um and uh the uh location is uh available on several areas on the town website. Um and uh we certainly um look forward to good a good attendance. We will have um again, one of the consultants. The one that is most involved with mapping. And really the discussion will be um where people would like to put a marker down on where they think um multifamily housing by right could be best located in Concord. And we'll we'll have an interest uh initial presentation from the consultant and then breakout groups to discuss with with people from all over town um and get a a sense of what your neighbors are thinking and um how to go about the process of thinking about where to to have multifamily housing.
So my question about the upcoming forum was uh whether there is a specific role for planning board members. There will be breakout sessions are of do we want planning board members to distribute, be distributed among breakouts uh sessions, or will there be facilitators that the consultant or the town is already lining up? Elizabeth, I wonder if you know about that, because if I should be prepared in any way, I would like to be prepared.
Um so we do have um ten facilitators lined up. Um and um so I will be the the Zoom master for tomorrow night. And while um during the initial presentation, um assigning, you know, randomly assigning um people to breakout rooms evenly, but then making sure um a planning board member is in each of the breakout rooms. There won't be a planning board member in each one, because I'm I'm hopeful there's gonna be more than, you know, six breakout rooms. Um but yeah, that's that's how it's gonna um hopefully how it will play out tomorrow.
Thanks. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Yeah.
Um and the the only other thing I wanted to mention is that um we have continued our um committee community engagement process and that we've met with a number of uh committees and boards, um starting with the select board, then the housing round table. Um Elizabeth and I and um Megan Zamuto also have met with um the Concord Business Partnership, the Economic Vitality Committee. The West Concord Junction Cultural Committee will be meeting with the Historical Committee Commission, uh the West Concord Advisory Committee. And several others that are now in discussion regarding dates. So if anyone is um represented here from a committee and would like to have um an opportunity to have a portion of your agenda devoted to the MBTA uh community, um multifamily housing program, we are um eager to um communicate with you. So Elizabeth, um any comments that you'd like to make? Otherwise, we could take public comment then.
Um no, just um just to remind people that um on the front page of the website, you can sign up under left hand column is notify me. And you can sign up to receive notifications of whenever we post anything new to the MBTA Communities webpage. Um also under news and notices, we're putting things out on news and notices. Um and on the MBTA Community page, um we're updating all of, you know, the different um events we're holding and having. Um we've outlined, um tomorrow, there will be a MBTA Communities Connection Hour um tomorrow morning at the Dunkin' Donuts on Throw Street from seven thirty to eight thirty. And then we've lined up uh one a week for the rest all of August, and those are all listed. Um ones at Hope Coffee, the Showboat Brook Bakery. Can't remember the other one. Um but so we're just, we're posting new stuff, you know, as as we get it and as it comes in.
Thank you. So now we'll take public comment and I see Carol Savoy has um her hand up if you and.
Sure. Um thank you, Linda. Uh I have a question. I'm just um wondering the um two twenty uh two thousand two hundred and twenty nine Main Street, the former Star Matt Star Matt site, which is a forty six acre property, I guess. Um is that? Uh you know, could that be a potential uh area for the MBTA that's outside the fifty percent? Is it buildable or is it, you know, what kind of state is it in? I know it's been going through remediation and discussions about what to do with it. I didn't know where that landed.
Sorry to be a fuss budget, but Carol, can you give your name and address for the sake of opening?
Oh, uh uh apologies. Carol Savoy sixty one Bell Knapp Street.
Um I'm not an authority here, but my understanding is that's still federal property um under the EPA control. The town hasn't acquired it, but still would be municipal pop property there, so I don't think it's um land that we could consider as a part of an overlay district. I think it would be excluded land, but Elizabeth, please set me straight if that's wrong. And we're gonna ask the consultant tomorrow if if we don't know.
Yeah, I I think uh it'd probably be better to ask the consultant, but I will look um I will look on the map real um quickly, because while it may be federal um under, you know, a status of having to be remediated, um I don't think the the ownership is considered um federal ownership. So but that's a definitely a good question. Um we can ask tomorrow at the event. But it could, and if if it's not excluded, then yes, it could, it could easily be um included in the overlay district, even though it's outside the half mile.
Okay, and wasn't it once they were thinking about building there or something?
Wasn't somebody? There's, there's, um you can go to the uh twenty two twenty nine Main Street um webpage. There's a committee. There's a whole um report. There's the reuse report. Um and it outlines what is capped and not buildable, what areas are buildable, what areas are wetlands, and um there's an extensive report um on that property.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'll bring it up with the consultants, because you know, it might be a a good solution for us. So thank you.
Yes, thank you for the question and we hope to see you tomorrow night. Um are there any other uh questions or comments from the public? Uh Mary Hartman.
Thank you, Linda. Um I can add a little bit about two 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 nine Main Street. There is a town committee right now looking at that. The town has not taken ownership of that. There are liens against the property and the committee is actually doing a pretty thorough risk analysis. Um and then we'll recommend to the select board whether we should take ownership or not. So the timing is um, I don't know what the time, timing was probably a few years out before the remediation is completed and before the town is ready to make a decision.
Thank you. Any additional uh questions or issues from the public? If not, um we will move on to um administrative item three, the draft scenic road rules and regulations. Uh Elizabeth, would you like to?
Um so the board was um forwarded a um an additional memo that the Public Works Commission had sent. Um and I just wanted to make sure that the board members received it. If there was anything um new in there that you wanted me to um consider based on the previous conversation that the board had with the Public Works Commission and Public Work Staff and the Historical Commission. Um before I finalize um the draft regs for the board to review and then send to town council. So I just wanted to make sure there wasn't something that um something new. Um if everybody feels that everything got a, you know, at least discussed and will need to go over it the, when the final draft comes before the board, before it goes to town council.
I just have a question for you, Elizabeth. I noted the last time this came around to us, there was a a proposed definition of a stone wall. It was a rather short definition that had come from somewhere else, some other jurisdiction and seemed to be actually quite succinct. And and I wasn't clear, is that part of the draft or was that circulated as commentary of just noting that there was such a thing out there?
Um so the board had a, you know, a pretty good conversation with the Public Works Commission. Um uh Public Work Staff and the Historical Commission and um the senior planner, Ann Clifford. Um I asked her to provide me additional um, you know, information to try and address the concerns that um and issues that were raised and received um input from um you know, three or four different um people on how to address that issue and that definition. So the final draft that will be coming to the board um will have a modified uh definition that hopefully addresses the issues and concerns that have been raised.
Yeah, thank you.
And Elizabeth, do you think that we would have that um uh draft, a a final draft available for our next meeting, I think, which is August eighth?
That's, that is my goal.
Great. Okay, any other comments from the board? Um then I'd like to open this for any public comment. Um if there is a comment, could you raise your hand? If not, um thank you much, very much. And then we'll move on to the um envisioned Concord Action Item Discussion. And Elizabeth, this is um what we've been waiting for.
Um. Okay, I will. Let me bring up. So it was um quite a few, I think a few months ago, um went through all of the highlighted um items that um I suggested changes to. Um the board went. I went through all of these, um and there were a couple of other comments and um board members wanted a little bit more time to uh review the chart. There's um quite a few, you know, a few new members. Um so this is back on the agenda for uh me to answer any questions and just to go through um one more time to see if there's any additional changes or updates that are needed. I don't know if you want to go through from the beginning again real quickly or. I don't know if you want to go through from the beginning again real quickly, or what, what's the best use of the board's time?
Is there anyone who would like to go through this line by line, or shall we? Or let's see what the consensus is. Are we good?
Well, particularly since we have repeatedly noted that we have a very heavy load this year with MBTA Communities. I although I see some scope for possibly adding more things to this chart, I don't think we would undertake them in the next year anyway. So I'm good.
I'm good. So I think we're all good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Elizabeth. It's a lot of work. And we very much appreciate it, truly. Our next item is 300 to 310 Baker Avenue. Is that correct? And I think we're at this point trying to ready comments that we might have for, to pass on to the Select Board that would pass them on to Mass Housing. And I'll ask, I know a number of you have been at various meetings in the site review, and I'll ask if there are any items that you'd like to bring up on that list that Elizabeth is forming that will be collated by Megan Zemuto. Yes, Sue.
Elizabeth, please help me out here. This is a 40B proposal, and so I am unclear on what our role is and things that we can either demand or ask for or recommend. In particular, this is going to bring more traffic to the area. If the Asabet Pedestrian Bridge is built, that will greatly alleviate traffic, but I don't know if we're able to ask for a contribution toward the bridge in any way, shape, or form. I also noted, have long noted that the sidewalk down Baker Ave up to the intersection of Baker, Bane, and Cottage is really a terrible sidewalk. It's narrow. It gets overgrown with poison ivy. There's nothing we can do about the, the Main Street Bridge over the Asabet because it's a state bridge. But are we able to ask for or sidewalk improvements, or at least comment on the poor quality of the sidewalk along Baker Ave? But I, I just don't know.
So the comprehensive permit process is, I don't know how much everybody's aware, but you basically think of it more as a negotiating process that the Board of Appeals will take with the applicant with input from town departments and town staff. And that is the negotiating part of the project. So the sidewalk, the condition of the sidewalk, that, you know, that is, that is a concern. And I think the board can raise it as a concern and ask the Board of Appeals at that time to discuss with the applicant, the potential to improve that sidewalk. And that's perfectly acceptable. I, as far as the discussion on the Asabet Bridge, I want to be very careful because you know, we're in line to get some significant funding in the Transportation Improvement Plan. And the Transportation Improvement Program, sorry, the TIP Program. And there's very, very specific things that have to go along with advancing that project. So I, I, I want to be careful how we frame that discussion. But what I can tell you is, the developer is 100% supportive and wants that bridge to happen. And they have, on their own, incorporated a path that meets the requirement of mass DOT for a multimodal, multimodal trail from where our project would end. This, the Novo project would begin, and they've designed that path that goes through the project and out to Baker Ave. And have already indicated that that will be a fully accessible path and open to the public. So, you know, they're 100% supportive, you know, of that project. So whether there's room to discuss, you know, additional support for that project, you know, that can also be part of the conversation.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Frankly, the town has been pursuing the Asabet Bridge. It's a hard, long slog, as you well know. But as far as I know, and you should please correct me if I'm wrong, no one is really planning on any, or has been planning on any update to the Baker Ave sidewalk. So that would be a more fruitful avenue. And even if we had the Asabet Bridge, I assume a lot of people would take it. But nevertheless, anyone wanting to go down to Dino's or, or Concord Green or, or to walk to East Concord or something, did I say East Concord? Downtown Concord? Would certainly be interested in an improved quality of sidewalk. It might also be an amenity for the people of Concord Green who might like to use the new Asabet Pedestrian Bridge even when it gets built, rather than crossing the Main Street Bridge, which is so dreadful. And wait, there was one other thing. What was it? Oh, I noted at the site walk that the fire department wasn't very happy about fire truck access, but we can leave that to the fire department, can't we, and not bother?
Yes.
I had a couple of questions. I think probably you can help me with them more than than anything else. But one is, I'm pretty sure, but I didn't quite get through all the legalese of the documents that the property has to remain as a rental property. And, and does that persist whether they sell the property? Is there any chance that this wouldn't be in perpetuity, that they could convert it to condos, and that we could lose the numbers on the SHI?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. A second question I had, had to do with the flood zone and FEMA requirements and resiliency. They, they just didn't deal with that a lot in the application. And so I just had a general question about how is their approach, given that there is so much wetlands in the area? In, in terms of how they're dealing with that. So it, it just, they had so many other things in the application that were impressive, but I didn't see a lot about the floodplain and resiliency. And then the other thing I had was that there was a tremendous amount of focus on sustainability goals, and it was very impressive what they were considering. But I didn't understand how they were going to get from considering, which all depends on the economics of it and the actuality of what of those sustainability goals were they going to actually build in? I don't know how to communicate that either to, to because I, I understand they're at a certain point in their design phase, but there were so many exciting things that they discussed. But I really wasn't sure how many would actually appear in the building. And tho- those were my comments, but otherwise I thought it was a very pleasing and pleasant proposal.
So what I can tell you is the, the application that gets submitted to Mass Housing is, it's, it's very focused on what Mass Housing needs as a subsidizing agency to determine the viability of the project. Basically, as the bank. So a lot of the information and details that the community and the Board of Appeals will want, will be included in the comprehensive permit application that gets submitted to the Board of Appeals. That will be engineered, you know, drawings to show the floodplain fill and compensatory storage. It will include a detailed traffic and assessment, and some of the other comments that Town Staff has provided is a little bit more detail on making sure that it's not just the intersection of Main Street and Baker Ave or Baker Ave Extension and Route 2, but the left-hand turn lane on Route 2 onto Main Street. Because that'll be, you know, one of, you know, the more used traffic patterns, or Lowsbrook Road and Commonwealth Ave, because, you know, that would be another direction. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute myself for a second. Okay, sorry.
Done, wow.
So there'll be a detailed traffic, traffic report. There'll be, you know, additional information and more detailed information on they are proposing to hook up to the existing sewer main that's behind 300 Baker Ave, which from 300 Baker Ave, it goes under the Asabet and then connects to the town sewer main on the other side. So they're going to have to provide information about that infrastructure and its ability and capacity, you know, to be able to handle the additional flow and and then, you know, the same other requirements, the, you know, lighting requirements, and all of that additional information will be part of that application to the Board of Appeals.
Elizabeth, how do we evaluate the impact on the schools, or is that outside of the purview of the project?
That's outside the purview of comprehensive permit. So, again, you know, again, the, the negotiation side of things. I believe when the comprehensive permit for the project Nathan Pratt at the, you know, just past Forest Ridge Road. When it came through, it was called Concord Muse, and then it was, now it's the Prescott. You know, with that project, you know, the conversation as far as mitigation, you know, that, that was 325 units. And that did have a direct impact as far as, like, public safety. And so they did provide mitigation funds to offset for the fire depart, West Concord Fire Station. But I have had a conversation already with Dr. Hunter, and she is putting together a memo as far as not only to, for this project, but even just like the MBTA Communities discussion. And, you know, the, the facts about schools and multifamily housing. The Prescott, Nathan Pratt, that project, 325 units. The schools saw across from, you know, preschool to 12th grade, saw an additional 100 children. So to give, to give you an idea, and that was across all grades.
Right, right. So based upon that, we expect probably 75 kids or something like that to come out of this thing. You, you've answered my question. They're looking into it. Yeah, my concerns are that and the traffic, obviously. Those are the two biggest concerns that I have. Thank you.
Should I bring up outdoor lighting, light spillage onto the environment?
That's not, that's definitely not something you need to bring up now. But so mass housing under the law is required to inform the community and provide a period of public comment as they evaluate the project for the, you know, project eligibility letter. The developer cannot file with the Board of Appeals until they have that project eligibility letter. But the, the scope that mass housing is looking at, it is not the same lens that a community looks at. They are, they are looking for comments from the community that are more of, you know, a, a bright line of this project is, you know, on an old landfill. There's no way it can happen. The community, we're over 10%, you know, we disagree. And, or we have some, you know, safe harbor. We, you know, we just, a building permit was just issued for, you know, a, a different project, or we currently are having, looking at 10, 10 applications, because there's different subsidized agencies. So it's, it's not one agency. So there are some communities right now that their, their Board of Appeals is having to look at, you know, five, six, seven comprehensive permits. So there, there is language in the law where you, you, the community could say to the subsidized housing inventory, it's like, no, no. You can't issue this project eligibility letter because we're currently already at our max of, you know, reviewing things. So that's really the, you know, the bright line that they're looking at. But it is, this is a really good opportunity for the community, and this is what boards and committees, you know, are providing comments to the Select Board. Town Staff is providing comments to give the applicant, you know, basically a heads up on, you know, these are the issues and concerns and comments and things we want to see and things we want to talk about with you during the process. And what mass housing will do in their project eligibility letters, you know, should they grant it? Which I, I don't see any reason why they would not grant it. They will just direct the applicant to, you know, please work with the community to address the issues and concerns outlined in, you know, the letter dated, you know, August 8.
Great, thank you. Thanks for clarifying.
More questions or thoughts from the board? Let's move to Mary Hartman.
Thank you, Linda. I forgot to introduce myself the last time I spoke. I'm Mary Hartman. I'm a member of the Select Board. I just wanted to mention, everything that Elizabeth said was just now is absolutely right. At this stage in the process, the Select Board was a little bit unclear ourselves about what is our role at this stage, because we're collecting comments up through August 8. And last night, we had a presentation by Liz Rust, which basically, in the videos available, if anybody wants to watch that, as far as what's our role now collecting comments? And as Elizabeth mentioned, we're really, at this stage, mass housing is looking for anything that would be a showstopper. And any other comments? And that's what they're looking for. So, you know, we're gonna contest it, or, or something's, something that would make them hesitate because they're a funding agency. So that's really what's happening now. Having said that, you can say whatever you want as far as giving comments to the Select Board. But when those things will really matter is when this is in front of the ZBA. So I, I just wanted to, I mean, we, I, I thought Elizabeth did a great job. That's what I heard from her. That's what I heard last night from Liz Rust. And again, that video is available. So we're looking forward to your input, and our letter will be sent on August 8. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. If there are no additional comments, we can move on to any, oh, I'm sorry. I, I apologize. I missed Carol Savoy.
Carol Savoy, 61 Bellknap Street. I just had a question. I know we've been talking about the MBTA Act, and then we're talking about this 300-310 Baker Ave development. And I had asked before, you know, could that, if it was, you know, under
And I had asked before, you know, could that, if it was, you know, under the Cookie Platter zoning that we're coming out with, would this property count towards that MBTA? And I think there was some, people are going to look into because it was a 40B. Would it be applicable or not? And I didn't know if you got an answer to that yet.
No, we haven't, but our consultant that we're working with, who's doing the GIS and the compliance model side of things, I guess they have the, all the consultants have meeting, a meeting with Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities and having further discussions regarding that and, and how comprehensive permits are going to play into this. But for the MBTA discussion alone, I, you know, I definitely see, you know, the, there is the ability to, for the community to decide, you know, hey, this 10 acres right here next to 300-310 Baker Ave, we can zone that to allow 20 units per acre and, you know, five stories. And so that density would get factored into our overall total that, you know, we have to zone for, and that can be part of this discussion. But as, as far as whether the state is going to treat existing comprehensive permit sites differently, you know, that I, that I don't know yet.
Right. Well, I don't think it's a existing comprehensive permit site yet because it hasn't been approved, right?
Well, I'm, I'm imagining that the application will be submitted sometime in October, and a decision should be issued within six months. So it may get, the decision may get issued before town meeting.
Got it. Yeah, it would just be unfortunate if, you know, it sounds like it's going to be approved. So if it's approved, we should take advantage of that fact and have it count towards our, our quota, I guess, if you would, or zoning, you know?
Well, whether it gets approved or not doesn't, doesn't make any difference because we're, we're not mandated to build under the MBTA communities. So if the community wants to have by right multifamily housing on that site, they can, they can zone for it. It, it, it would be an added bonus that something gets built. But since there's no requirement for anything to be built, it doesn't matter whether it gets, the comprehensive permit gets approved or not.
Okay, so I'm very, still confused about this Cookie Platter thing, as I think most people are. So let's just say, you know, that property, I don't know, call it 300-310 Baker Ave, that we decide to zone it as part of the platter, which is multifamily zoning. So therefore, it will count towards our MBTA Act quota.
We don't have a quota. There is no quota.
Well, multifamily zoning requirement, how's that?
Yeah, they call it the capacity requirement. Your zoning has to have the capacity for a certain number of units.
Okay, so if we decide to zone it according to the MBA, MBTA requirements that are capacity requirements, then it will count towards the capacity requirements regardless if this building gets approved or not. Is that?
Correct, correct. So the question would be, do you want to zone that area for just 15 units per acre and three stories? Or the only, the only difference it makes is if, if the MBTA communities, if the community decides to, to, to zone that, that 10 acres to allow six stories and 20 units per acre, all it really means is the, this applicant is, is ahead of the town moving forward with zoning. And the only way they could move forward ahead of the zoning is by a comprehensive permit. If, if this were to pass in April and the Attorney General approves it, then they could have just come in with a site plan and got a building permit and not have to go through the comprehensive permit side of things.
I think we've spent enough time because we're kind of getting back to MBTA and not doing Novo Riverside. So, so I'm going to say, especially if, if we're going to have a meeting tomorrow night, that, that, that we could put that one to bed. So I think if there are no more questions about or comments about Baker Avenue, perhaps we can go on to liaison comments and/or town planner updates.
I don't think, I'm not the liaison to the Community Preservation Committee. I'm the designee. Am I supposed to report at this portion of the meeting, or is that separate?
No, this is when you would, when, so I can change the agenda to say Planning Board Liaison Designee, if you want, but it's the same thing.
Okay. Do you have some comments on the CPC?
Particularly, but I did go to the meeting and begin to find out what it's like to be a CPC member. And I will report back when I have more to say.
Excellent. So I guess if that is our last question, everyone, we look forward to seeing you tomorrow. And because it's planning board time all the time, and I appreciate everyone's time and thank you for attending. Oh, I'm sorry, Jean.
Yeah, I'm so sorry because I, I came late. I just had one quick question. And I don't know if anyone can answer it, but I do know for, this is about the Commonwealth Ave project, and they're looking for relief from parking. I just had a question. Do we have a log of other relief from parking that we've already granted within West Concord? Have we granted it for other groups? And do we have a record of that that I could pick up somewhere? I'm just curious how much, because we have these guidelines, and then if we continue to give relief, you know, we're, we're going to get saturated, so.
Yeah, I think we'd all be interested to know if there's any kind of a compilation of how much parking relief has been granted by the planning board. I know I would as well. Do you know, Elizabeth, if anyone's?
So I, I don't believe there is a comprehensive list because the Board of Appeals has been granting relief for a while. But it also comes down to the number of legally non-conforming uses and uses changing over. And there might have been a more intense use in the property, let's say, you know, a restaurant, and there was only four spaces associated with that building since 18 something. And then that turned over to a retail space, but that requires even, you know, less parking. So they just get to do that. They don't have to go to the Board of Appeals, you know, to get relief. The, the ones that I am aware of, Brookside Square is, is one. Salt Box Kitchen got a relief for a few spaces. But I can, I can look. Marcia Raspiesa might have started a compilation, but I'll, I'll have to look and see.
I think, I was just going to say, I think that since we're doing this parking study, it's moving forward, it, it might not be bad to look backward. And that's a nice question to look at and make some comparisons of what we've done and what the standards might be. So thank you, Jean. And you like the last word?
Impartial answer to your question, Jean. Earlier in the meeting, when you weren't signed on yet, Elizabeth noted that two combined business residence projects, 13B Commonwealth and 40B Harrell Street, got permitted for their residential units at a rate of one and a half parking spaces per bedroom.
Yeah, it's not for, it's 50, 70, and 80, yeah, 50, 70, 80, Harrell, Brookside Square.
Brookside Square, yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all.
With that, yes, good night to all, and thank you for coming.
Good job, Linda.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.